All righty, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, January 7th, 2019. Tonight, we have Boy Scout Troop 617 in the audience. Guys, why don't you come on up? They're going to help lead us in the pledge. And we have Cub Scout Troop 100 from Stentrum. Why don't you guys come on up? And come on up to the podium here, guys. Don't be shy. Do you guys want me to have the Colonel come up and help you with it, too? No? All righty. Why doesn't everybody rise to the pledge? And then these young men and women are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Who's going to start it off? Which one of you guys? You? Come on up. Come on up by the microphone.
There you go.
There you go. Where's the flag? It's right here, so you can just tell everybody to start. Move your hats. Okay, you can hold it in your hand. Don't worry. That's all right. You own it now. You broke it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Thank you, guys. Uh, Mr. Cobb will help. Here comes Mr. Boware. Somebody will help. Thank you, guys and ladies. Chief White, would you do us the honor? Chief, I don't want to remind you, but this may be your second to last. All right, wait. Let me just ask a question here in the audience. How many of you think we should reject his retirement letter and tell him that he can't retire? Raise your hands. There we go. How many want to tell his wife, "Gail, that"?
Heather, do you have your taser?
Connie, you just lose that letter. Just never exist.
Thank you, Mayor, for that.
Chief, it's all yours.
It's funny you mention that. We were doing some calculations the other night, figured out over 15 years I've been to over 450 city council meetings, so... But it's all been good. All been good.
I bet you don't miss those 2:00 AM ones.
Yeah, that's true. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we're here tonight and going to recognize some very special individuals with great accomplishments, and we just thank you for the blessings you bestowed on these, this team, this past year, the safety and everything you provided to them. And pray for their endurance and for the days and progress ahead for them as well, Lord, and the safety of their families. Lord, we're reminded in just a few days, a week or so, we're going to celebrate MLK Day again here in the city of Oviedo. Think and reflect back how much Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. has done for this nation, that perhaps we can emulate some of the things that he did. And we pray that in your name. Lord, tonight, one very special request. We pray for a police officer in our employment that is battling a health issue, Lord, that you give him comfort and strength in his endurance. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. This time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. It's about 6:35 PM. We have all members of council present. So our first item on the agenda is a ceremonial item, and that is going to be the recognition of the Oviedo High School Boys Bowling Team. They are the 2018 state champions. That is quite exciting. So Council, why don't you join me down in the front?
So as we said, we're going to recognize the boys' state champions who come right here from Oviedo. So the first one I want to introduce, so she can do all the introductions, is their coach and an actual PVA bowler in her day, Pat Costello. Pat, come on up.
Champion, huh? Where is that? Champion? Hall of Famer?
Hall of Famer. I always forget that. That's right. Pat is a Hall of Fame PVA bowler. So this young lady can bowl. Yeah, PWB, what? The Women's League?
Yeah, yeah. On the women's side.
All right. The women's side. And also, folks, I'm going to announce, and it's very sad, Pat is retiring this year from Oviedo. After how many years?
Just five.
Just five? Well, we've enjoyed every moment of it, Pat. Let me turn it over to you, and you can introduce your team.
Thank you. Before I do that, there's always a story, right? The last couple of years, we've been very fortunate to have won the girls' state championship two years in a row. This was just a little bit too much for the girls to try to repeat, but they bowled like a team and ended up third. But the beginning of this year, I said to these guys, I said, "Are you tired of everything being about the girls? I am. I'm tired of it. So we need to do what we need to do to get the job done and for you to win." And I'm thinking, "Well, we'll see how far that goes," right? Well, they worked very, very, very hard. I was, I guess, more than surprised, I would say, about the last six weeks going into the season, going into the state tournament, all of a sudden, light bulbs started going off, and I went, "Wow, their timing is perfect." Then we get to the district championship, and they win the district championship, and they peaked a little bit more. And I said, "This is scary." Now, I didn't tell them that. But you can see athletes performing at the right time, at the right place, and you can see where they were going. Lo and behold, they went from 29th place at the state tournament after the first game in two days all the way to the championship match and are the state champions. So without any further ado, I will introduce to you, I'm going to kind of introduce them in the order in which they bowl. It's easier for me to remember, see? First, senior, our leadoff bowler, Evan Corn. Come on, Evan. Evan's our left-hander. Every team has to have one in bowling. Next is our sophomore. I call him my big Kahuna because we have a Brandon and a Brendan, and hey, you know, whatever comes out, that's what I call him. So Brendan Carney. Come on up here, Brendan. Brendan's come a long way in one year's time. He reminds me of myself when I was in high school. He bowls every single day, so long as he gets his homework done, maybe. Bowling in the number three position as a senior, sorry to leave, this man's leaving. I spent one whole practice session just with this young man, and from that day forward, he is kind of one of the catalysts that moved everybody forward in winning the state championship, Brandon Linden. They look like basketball players, right? The next young man's a sophomore, lot of ability. He hooks the ball and has more revolutions, bringing the ball, turning over. I know y'all, the don't bow, will think it was spin, but it's not spin. But this young man can knock them dead, Sean Rogers. He had the highest average on the team at 200 even for the season, bowling season. 200 even. And that's bowling in three different bowling centers. It's kind of nice. This next young man is just wild as can be. I just love him to death because you never know what he's going to do next. He's a two-hander. He revs it up. He uses the lane. He uses the approach. He yells. He screams. He hollers. He's probably grown more than any athlete that I've had in the time I've been here, Jacob Ramos. Are you happy I didn't say Joshua? Okay, good. I had his brother Joshua, so I have to always hesitate before I say him. All right. We have the three guys that are left. If you don't have these guys, you can't get the job done. It's the hardest positions on the team. These guys know they're going to bowl. If they get in trouble, we have to have teammates to fall back on, have substitutes, just like in any sport. Well, these three didn't bowl very much at the state tournament, but their attitude, their excitement with the team, staying in the moment, makes this happen. We don't win without these three guys. So freshman, two-hander, Nick Zed. Zayed. Zed Zud, whatever. A sophomore. Last year, he didn't get to bowl in the championships. He didn't get to bowl this year. He's in the lineup to bowl in the competitions. He's done fairly well. I expect these three guys next year to fill in for our three that are graduating. He has a handshake. You know, when you use a 15-pound ball, you better have a handshake. And last, you know, not least, but our senior, he's another lefty. He has put in a lot of time and dedication to this team, Daniel Rios. And, you know, I'm the coach, but I can't do this by myself. I have two young men who, without them, they wouldn't be standing there. Because when you've got the girls bowling here, you've got the guys bowling there. Or at Boardwalk, you have the girls bowling over here, and the guys bowling over there another 100 feet. So I can't be in two places at one time. So without these two gentlemen, one of which is here tonight, who are graduates from Oviedo High School, this wouldn't be happening, right, guys? He's the best. And our other is Joshua Ramos, who is Jacob's brother, who saved us at the last minute because we have school projects, you know? So Jeremy had to go to school, and I had a call in the reserves. Jacob came in, and, I mean, oh, that's right, but you were in already. Joshua. See what I mean? And they look alike, too, so I don't even want to go there. So without any further ado, I just want to thank, I have my two mothers in the back. I love all the parents, but the two standing up in the back there, Charlotte Besquoz and I was going to say Terry Carney, but it's Terry Martini. I can't do what I do without them also. They kind of keep all the other parents in line, you know what I mean? And then, of course, our A.D., Jen Doherty. Thank you, what you've done for me and these kids for the last three years. I just love it. Thank you so very much.
Well, that is quite exciting. Guys, why don't you come on up front here, line up, and we'll get a picture of the championship Nobody will see me, that's okay. Come on up in the center.
Oh, you want to be in the picture?
There we go. Oh, that's okay.
Well, sure. Who am I to say no?
Oh, wait, wait. Come on up, parents.
You started this.
I did. I did. That's okay.
Uh-oh. Watch out for the ones with scissors in their pockets.
Yeah, the ones with scissors in their pockets. We don't trust them.
Charlotte, get up here.
Hi, fix them off.
Oh, you're so bad.
All right, hang on, one more. President of the chamber.
One more. One more. One more.
He did that on purpose.
Come on, Drew.
That was flashing.
All righty. Well, congratulations, guys.
Thank you, sir. We have another bowl-a-thon, Pat.
You just let us know when.
I will. I think it's in April sometime.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now, hang on a second. I didn't say everybody could leave. Coach, come on up front here. You have a what? That's at 8:00. We all want to watch it. You know, Pat is awesome, is she not? I mean, just give her a round of applause. She's been with these kids for five years, state championships, raising money, out in the community. Councilman Hankin and I spend a lot of time at the bowling alley, and we run into Pat all the time, and she's always there. So Pat, you know, you're retiring, and we have a resolution here from the city that we are going to present to you, and I'm going to read it if that's okay with you. We have a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida honoring Pat Costello, bowling coach and teacher. Whereas as a professional bowler, Pat Costello notched 13 titles, making her one of only nine women to earn three or more team titles, and helping her earn recognition from the Miami Herald in 1999 as one of the 20th century's top 16 women's bowlers. Give her a round of applause.
I didn't bowl over 100 years.
That's all right. I've got more here. Look at all those, look at all those, look at all those whereas's.
We've got a lot of whereas's.
Whereas Pat Costello was inducted into the Hall of Fame for the United States Bowling Congress in 1986 and the Professional Women's Bowlers Association in 1997. And whereas Pat Costello served as coach for Team USA Bowlers, was recognized in 2015 by Bowlers Journal International as one of the world's 100 top bowling coaches, and used that experience to help earn Bowling Coach of the Year awards from the Seminole Athletic Conference and the Florida Dairy Farmers, and Girls Coach of the Year from the Orlando Sentinel Varsity Sports. And whereas Pat Costello guided UCF club bowlers for nearly a decade, including future professional bowlers who are followed in her footsteps, and she continues to teach UCF students today. Whereas her junior gold youth league coaching at the Oviedo Bowling Center has successfully attracted and developed aspiring college bowlers from Seminole County and neighboring counties. And whereas the Oviedo City Council hereby recognizes and honors Pat Costello for her generosity, inspiration, innovation, and skill that has led Oviedo High School students to become athletic champions, while winning three consecutive Florida High School Athletic Association state team championships, one individual state championship, and finishes in 3rd, 5th, and 11th nationally for the Oviedo High School Girls Bowling Team in her five years of coaching here at the high school. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Oviedo, Florida, that the mayor and the city council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community express our deepest appreciation to Coach Pat Costello for her contributions to the young citizens of the city of Oviedo, the Orlando metropolitan area, and the state of Florida. We congratulate Pat on a well-earned retirement from Oviedo High School after this coming summer, and extend our best wishes to her and her family for continued success and happiness and good health in the years to come. This has the city seal, and it's been signed by all of us. Pat, congratulations.
That's very good.
Councilman Britton has a 97 average, but he, it's a handicap league, so he gives us all of our pins. Congratulations.
Thank you very, very much.
Absolutely. Honestly, it's our pleasure.
Love you guys even more now. There you go. Feel good?
Yep. So that's always the fun stuff. So moving along, we're up to the approval of the minutes for our December 3rd, 2018 regular session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes?
Looks good.
Hearing none, call to vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to our public comment portion of the meeting. This is the public's ability to address the council on any item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda. I have no written request. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion. Give me just a second here to catch up. We are up to our consent agenda. These are items number four through 10. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman Hankin?
The only thing I wanted to say is that the winning mural that's going to be painted out in Round Lake Park, boy, that gentleman did a beautiful job. He really, really captured Oviedo's history. So if you haven't seen it, take a look at that. That's awesome. And the art board, I think they had a lot of good things to work with, but I think they got it right there. So art board did a good job on that one. That is some painting. Can't wait to see it done.
Xavier Moses looks here in the city.
Yep. So other than that, everything looks great.
Councilman Britton, you have the second.
It looks good.
Anything from my right-hand side? Uh, no? Well, that is great.
Can I ask one question?
Sure, of course.
The ready-mix concrete, Bobby, is that the stuff that we had samples brought over? Or is it a different brand? It's okay.
Regular concrete. All right. And Drew, I see new lighting for the, for Round Lake Park is in here, so that's awesome. When will that be installed?
Uh, yeah, it just goes back, and we'll have to finalize, and then hopefully it'll be going in about around the same time as the Round Lake Park approved, which we note first today.
Okay, great. So all go in together. Awesome. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Motion on the table is to adopt. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we have no public hearings this evening, but we do have a first reading of an ordinance. Give me just a second here to catch up. And this is ordinance number 1678. This is delegation relating to animal control. Mr. Groot, can you read this by title only for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida effectuating the general regulation of animals and fowl under the provisions of the Seminole County Code, repealing the provisions of Section 2.89J, Section 10.2, and Section 10.21 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oviedo, deleting the word "animal" from Section 22-144C12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oviedo, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for savings provision, providing for conflict, providing for separability, providing for codification, as well as the correction of scriptural errors, and providing an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten everyone?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the purpose of this ordinance is to eliminate any conflict that we may have with the Seminole County Code. And the reason we want to eliminate that conflict is to, so that the Seminole County Animal Control can conduct code enforcement activity within the city. There's part of the county charter that says that when the county adopts an ordinance, it is applicable across the entire county unless a municipality has a conflicting ordinance. Our code had some conflicts in it that, with the Seminole County Code, and so what we're doing is we're bringing forward this ordinance to eliminate those conflicts so that the animal control can conduct their activities within the city. It's recommended that council schedule a public hearing for January 22nd, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for January 22nd, 2019, on ordinance number 1678 here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
So move. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on the motion?
No, sir.
Councilman Britton?
I'm good.
Who's that? You, Keith?
I said, "I'm good."
Okay. Chief?
Fine.
Oh, wait, councilman shut down. That's going to take a while. I'm sorry. All righty, so no questions on this item for now. The motion on the table is schedule the public hearing for January 22nd, 2019, 6:30 PM here at City Hall. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 13. It is resolution number 3676-19, and this is Republic Services requested rate adjustment. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request from Republic Services to approve a rate adjustment of $1.18 per month per address for what they assert as extraordinary and unusual increases in the residential solid waste and recycling collection program. The request is made under 13.03 that says that Republic can request rate adjustments for what they call, what the franchise agreement terms as extraordinary and unusual cost of operation. The staff reviewed the request and the supporting information, and what we found was in Section 902 of the franchise agreement that the recycling program, which is really the basis for the requested increase, the recycling, that section doesn't allow for any increased cost to the city regarding the recycling program. So the staff is, based on our findings of the review in Section 9.02 of the agreement, the staff's recommending denial of the requested rate adjustment. The resolution is written per the staff's recommendation. Now, one of the things that council may want to consider is that the franchise agreement will expire September 30th, 2020. One thing you could consider is initiating a RFP process now instead of waiting a year to get forward with that. Another thing that, one of the things that we found, we consulted with Mr. Groot on, was that in order to facilitate such a rate adjustment for the recycling program, we really need to amend the agreement, that, so that the agreement language will allow for such a request. And that's another option that you would have. You could direct us to pursue an amendment to the agreement so that it would facilitate the request. I don't think anybody argued, would argue that China's reaction to our federal government's policies is anything that Republic would have any control over. And so that is an extraordinary effect to their ability to, for the recycling program. However, with Section 9.02 of the franchise agreement, we do not believe that we can recommend any type of approval of any type of cost increase to, involving the, involving it. So the recommendation is that you adopt Resolution Number 3676-19, which will deny the requested rate adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I see representatives here from Republic. Would you like to come up, make any presentation for the council?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for hearing our narration this evening about the headwinds that we're facing in the recycling industry. I'm Don Collins, municipal sales manager, and this is Chris Jones. He is the general manager for the entire central Florida area, and he actually is over the MRF also that processes the city's materials. So in recent years, the recycling industry has been slowly watching its, the financial viability of recycling services diminish. There's a lot of different reasons... viability of recycling services diminish. There's a lot of different reasons for that, but they've all been kind of, you know, death by a thousand cuts type of scenarios. And so, we've tightened our belts, and we've absorbed where we can, we've adjusted our approaches where we can. But in January of 2017, we were dealt a blow that we simply cannot overcome. And that is Communist China has implemented a ban on certain recyclables coming into their country, particularly from the United States. So, as of January 1st, we have been facing a crisis. Republic Services, as a company, traditionally was sending 40% of what we recycled to China. And that stopped overnight on January 1st. So, as you can imagine, supply and demand, suddenly that material could no longer be marketed to China. We had to re-divert it and redirect it to domestic manufacturers. Supply and demand, they now have a fantastic supply, and so the prices began to drop significantly. So, basically what China soared is, is they banned all mixed paper from import into China, effective January 1. Mixed plastics, which they've been receiving 56% of the entire world's mixed plastics, those were stopped also. They reduced acceptable contamination levels from a 3% to 5% range that we've always enjoyed, both, you know, in China and domestically. They reduced that to less than half of a percent, which means it's got to be pristine. It almost has to come, not from a curbside program, but maybe from a manufacturer. And of course, they've reduced the number of permits that they're allowing companies to have to bring material in their country. We're not 100% sure of their motivation and what their end game is. We have been seeing them buying recycling companies in California, I mean, in the United States. So, they may be trying to shorten the supply chain and take some other controls of the market. So, we're not sure. But, in the meantime, the great news is, Republic Services is the second-largest recycling company in the United States, waste management being number one. And so, we're very well positioned with our partners, the folks that buy these materials from us. And so, we've had no problem at all making sure that our materials are getting recycled. So, I can tell you with total confidence, 100% of what we're collecting at the curb in Oviedo is going to our facility in Lakeland. It's being processed, baled, and shipped to an end user. I have a quick video, just to kind of show you the global effect of China Sword, and then we'll drill down a little bit, and we'll be done pretty quickly. It's not coming up on that page if you click that page.
We'll get there.
There it is. Not Oviedo.
It's become a way of life for Americans. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, more than 34% of garbage is recycled, an increase of 400% since 1960. But recycling as we know it is at a critical crossroads. For decades, the current recycling model worked for America. That model is no longer sustainable or economically viable. Once a profit center for municipalities, recycling collection no longer generates significant revenue, and some municipalities even lose money on recycling. What's driving the downturn in recycling? To start, the economics of recycling have shifted. Lower oil prices have reduced demand for recyclable commodities, causing prices to plummet. Cheap crude makes it less expensive to produce new plastic than to sort and clean recycled plastic. Also, prices for other recyclable commodities, such as aluminum, copper, iron, and paper, have fallen sharply. Furthermore, the cost of recycling glass is actually higher than its commodity value. And since it has a high CO2 footprint to recycle, and doesn't emit any greenhouse gases, often glass can be landfilled with less environmental impact than recycling it. Lastly, the global manufacturing trend of lightweighting packaging by using lighter and less materials has caused the recycling ton to evolve. It takes 90% more plastic bottles to make a ton than it did 15 years ago, increasing collection and processing Today, household recycling collections are contaminated with unrecyclable items that can't be processed. A recent survey found that 68.3 million Americans will place an item into a recycling container, even if they aren't sure it's recyclable. What impact does this have? Unrecyclable materials increase sorting time, damage recycling equipment, and decrease the value of commodities. Collections are further contaminated by materials that haven't been properly cleaned before being recycled. However, the popularity of recycling continues to grow. An overwhelming 90% of U.S. residents say they want recycling and are willing to pay for it. Maintaining the momentum recycling has gained is more than a matter of economics. Recycling conserves natural resources, saves energy, and reduces pollution. It's simply the right thing to do. To meet public demand, municipalities and Republic Services must engineer a shift in the current recycling model that is mutually beneficial for everyone. Through collaboration, we can create solutions to make recycling sustainable for our communities. What can you do today? Sort smarter. Proactively educate your community. Learn what materials can and can't be recycled in your community before placing an item in your bin. Make sure all of their items are empty, clean, and dry before placing them into your recycling bins. And finally, encourage them to share recycling knowledge with others. Not everyone is aware of what can be recycled or how it's done. Together, we can change the way we recycle to ensure that recycling remains sustainable for a better world and a brighter future for our blue planet. Learn more at republicservices.com/recyclingreimagined.
We can go to the next slide, too. So, the financial framework of recycling has been shaken, and we're working to shore that up and put in place a more durable financial model going forward. But the one thing that has not changed about recycling is it's incredibly important for the environment. Manufacturing recycled materials uses significantly less energy and significantly less water than raw materials. So, it's still a really awesome and important thing to do. Secondly, everything that we don't put into that landfill saves that landfill space. Landfills are filling up and closing, and every time you open a new one, it's unbelievably expensive. So, the faster they fill up, the higher the prices go. So, really, it's a cost-saving measure also, and you want to preserve that landfill space. So, this is, I'm sorry. I pointed my finger, and that was our, that was our sign. This is a snapshot of what a typical curbside program is generating. This actually came from the city of Jacksonville. And so, as you can see, the red bars on the left are the materials that receiving, that's the majority of the material that we're receiving, and those materials have zero or negative value. So, if you look down on the bottom left, 26.5% in Jacksonville is contamination. We cannot recycle it. 29.5% is soft mixed paper. China has shut that down, and now the value of it is down around zero. And then, 19.5% is glass. Glass is another zero-value material. On the right-hand side, you can see the graph. The green bar represents what happened to the value of cardboard. The number-one growing material at the curbside today is cardboard because of Amazon and eBay and those types of things. So, we're getting more cardboard, but it used to be worth 200 a ton, and now it's down in that 50 to 75 range. Huge blow to our financial model. And then, down on the bottom, the mixed paper. You know, a majority of what we get is mixed paper. It used to be worth 75, 80 bucks a ton, and now it's down there at zero. So, we've really taken a hit here over the last month, 12 months, and this is strictly because of China, China Sword. Next slide. They talked about lightweighting. I like this graphic because in 2000, we could generate a ton of PET water bottles with 48,000 bottles. Today, it takes 92,000. So, you got to drink a lot more water, and we have to make a lot more stops to get the number of bottles we need to generate a ton. In the Tide, you can see a demonstration of how manufacturers are trying to go to lighter-weight packaging. It saves them money, both in the manufacture of the packaging and in shipping. So, the bottom on the left is HDPE. That has a very high value. And the container on the right has virtually no value. It's an off-spec PET. And then, you can see the metal can. Tin cans have a great value. Anything metal, tin, and aluminum. And when you go to that pouch, we simply can't recycle that because it doesn't make it through our processing system. It can get stuck in the equipment. Next slide. So, this generates, this is basically a, an example of the types of educational material that we have to support the program going forward. The number-one easiest portion of our composite ton to improve on is the contamination. Our calculations show that we're getting about 22% contamination from Oviedo. We, for every, every point that we drop that, that helps a whole lot. And it helps the value of the ton go much higher as you drop the contamination. So, one of the things you see here is the box on the left says "always recyclable," and that's true. And the box on the right says "never recyclable," and you can see that we have glass in that particular box. Well, the truth is, Republic Services has two versions of that collateral, one with glass and one without. And the reason for that is because glass has become a very geographically determined material. In other words, if you have a buyer, you have a destination, a place to carry it to, then it's something that you should include in your recycling because it's heavy, and it occupies a lot of room on that garbage truck and at that landfill. So, if you have a good place to take it, you want to take it, but there's a lot of places that don't. And because of that, there are programs now that are completely eliminating glass. They're reducing plastics down to just one and two. We're still taking one through seven. So, the good news about the Oviedo program is nothing changes right now with the mix. Everything that we're taking, we're going to continue to take. There's no plan to change any of that. I don't know what's going to happen with the rest of the world with recycling. Some of the other Asian countries are kind of piggybacking on China and adopting some of their philosophy, I guess, or strategy. So, it still remains to be seen what the bottom of this issue's going to be. But, at the very least, at this juncture, our domestic partners are keeping us, keeping us with a destination to send this stuff to. So, here's, here's the main issue, and here's why we're here tonight. So, historically, we had, you know, waste companies, recycling companies have entered contracts with cities and counties, and we always knew that we had this cost that had to be included in our bid. In other words, you know, it costs $80 to process it when it gets to the recycling facility, and the 1587 is actually a little higher. That's, that's the garbage that comes out the back end of the facility. We've got to load that back on a truck. We've got to carry that to a landfill. We've got to pay the landfill fee. That 1587 is much higher than we would anticipated it to be. But nevertheless, you add the two together, it costs about 96 bucks a ton to process the recyclables. So, when we take your garbage and we deliver it to a landfill, we pay somewhere between 35 and 40 a ton to put it in the landfill, deliver it for them to take it, 35 or 40 a ton. When we deliver your recyclables to a recycling facility, they want 96. So, it seems like financially, it makes more sense to take recyclables to the landfill because of the money, but the part that's missing from this equation is the value. And up until January of 2017, when China Sword was implemented, we had enough money generated from the sale of the material to cover that cost. And not only did it cover that cost, it also covered the cost of a portion of your collection. So, what has happened, or what is happening, what we foresee over the next 12 to 36 months, and we've already seen it in a couple bids around the state, is as you go to bid and as contracts are renegotiated, curbside collection rates are doubling. So, there were, you know, in the $2, $2 to $4 range, and now they're going up to the $4 to $6, $8 range, depending on where you're at, because this, this cost has to be covered, and the cover of the, the cost of the trucking has to be covered. So, in the past, you know, this, this material's worth 200 bucks a ton. So, if I've got 200 bucks on one hand, and I got to spend 96 for the processing, and then I got to send a couple bucks a ton back to the hauling company to cover the collection costs, I still got plenty left over. And so, it was a great, it was a great business and a great thing for, for our stockholders and for the environment. But it's simply upside down. We're in an upside-down car, and we have to fix it financially and make it more durable, you know, change the structure of it, make it more durable so we can move into the future, and be able to adjust and not be taken to our knees when a foreign influence does something to really upset the marketplace. So, with that, I'll open up to any questions. You know, we're, we need some financial relief, and hopefully, the information we just provided, you know, justifies what we're looking for. And we understand we're, we're dealing with some contractual limitations, and we hope we can work through those to get us to where we need to be.
Thank you, Don. Let me go up and down the desk. I'll start with Councilman Britton.
So, is, is plastic valuable today?
So, plastics, ones through sevens, ones and twos. Ones are PET, like-
Like that water bottle?
Those are ones. And there are Coke bottles and things like that. So, when it comes to plastics, ones and twos have value. Three through sevens have no value.
Okay. We, you know, we've, we have known about this for a while. I've seen many articles on it, and what's going on in China. And I think what we, we need to do is start the education program and give, put the valuable stuff in the recycle bin so you can, you can use it. And the other stuff's got to go to the landfill. But I think this is a temporary condition. I think there's going to be technology coming out that'll, that'll make use of it. And I've got an article, I put an article on Facebook the other day about 3D printers as a solution to affordable housing. Build a house with a 3D printer, and guess what they use? They use PET water bottles as part of the mix, and throw in dirt, and out comes a house. There's going to be stuff coming along the way, I think, in the near future. There's going to be value for this, and we'll, we'll be able to pick this up and keep on going. So, I don't know what we do from here. I guess we need to vote on the resolution, Brian, or?
Not yet. We've still got a lot of discussion.
What is the process from here after the discussion? In my opinion, if you want to go out for the RFP, or if you want to, say, staff and Republic get together and bring forth revisions to the existing agreement, I don't think you need to take action on the resolution at all. If you feel that, if you agree, if you concur with the staff recommendation, then make a motion to, to adopt the resolution because then it would deny the proposed rate adjustment. If you wish to grant the rate adjustment, then I would have to seek assistance from Mr. Grude, as far as how we would go forth and do that. Okay. So, the worst case for you guys is wait till 2020, and you got to bite the bullet, and then we go out for bid. And I guess, I guess the middle ground is go out for bid earlier. And I'm not interested in that if, if the pickup rates are going to double. And I don't think the citizens will be happy with that. So, I think we, we got a little bit of discussion to go on here, and I'll, I'll let you all-
And they're saying with the option to just go and have a discussion and come back.
All right. Let's go up and down the desk and see where we end up. We'll go down to Councilman Chudnow.
Well, it seems from the franchise agreement that a rate request should be contrary to the, contrary to the agreement. That being said, I understand the issues that you have, but every business goes through those. So, at the moment, it looks like, let's see, for me, a rate adjustment is not the answer because we can't put out through the agreement. It's going out to bid early would be a possibility, but then it's cutting you short on, on that also.
You good, Chief?
Good.
Deputy Mayor?
The, for me, I understand the situation you're in. I agree with Councilman Chudnow with, you know, it is an extraordinary situation with, you know, it is, but it, there is a contractual issue. So, I think for me right now, I think it would have to be, you know, to, to go back and talk with, with staff on it and kind of look at it. I don't- I don't, right now, I don't want to see, see us going out for bid, especially with situation, you know, the mark, the way the market is. I think it would, it would hurt the citizens more than anything. So that's, that's my two cents right now.
Councilman Hinkin?
Let me just add a couple of things because, you know, first off, 12 years coming up of exemplary service to the city. I mean, I don't think you guys have ever missed a beat, and we can take that all the way back from when we first met Brian, when Brian was here, and he was above and beyond. I think the one thing, and I live and breathe this all day, and you hit it in your, your presentation, China is out of control. China doesn't do this, we're not where we are. I, I live it in my business. Every small business, medium business, and big business is dealing with the president's tariffs, their retaliatory tariffs back to us, and it's messing up business like crazy, people losing their jobs. There's a lot of stuff going on with that, that thing. So if the China situation doesn't happen, you guys aren't even here. You know, you're still sending it over there now. The good news with that is, you know, the president can, can fix that with the Chinese president, say, you know, you touched on it. You said, you know, there's some reason why they stopped doing it now. Yes, because we gave them tariffs, there's more on the table coming. So, you know, I don't look at contract language in extraordinary political times as even a factor anymore, because I see it with my business, I see it with cable companies, electric companies. This is thrust upon you with no notice at all. There is no way around it. And, and I, I have to commend you guys for finding these smaller people within the country to say, you know what, China, you're going to mess up our jobs. We're going to create jobs here, and maybe other people can take this and do it. So that's a, that's an excellent, excellent job. Going out to bid, we've all sat here for a long time, you know? We've had vendors come here that we went out for bid with, you know, and other different things. You know, somebody does the job for you for so long, you stick with them, especially when they're facing a world situation that they did not create, and they wouldn't be asking for it. Unfortunately, in my business, sometimes I explain it this way to, to my customers who are, you know, large telecommunications companies, and they take the mantra, that's your problem, deal with it. But it gets to the point where you cannot deal with it. You have costs, and this is what they are, and we don't work for free. So I would recommend that for right now, we take no action on this, and that you guys go sit down with the city manager and staff and see what you can work out with this and any other issues that are there. I certainly, you know, with all the investment we made in the cans, the service you guys have done, this, you know, in my view, there's really no reason to go out for an RFP. But what I would say, that I think would be important, should this China situation fix itself, as I tell my customers every day, once these tariffs go away, you know, that thing you were paying a dollar for, that you're paying a dollar 35 now, we'll fix it. So if you guys get the opportunity to go back there and it decreases the cost, then we have that conversation again. But any business, yours, mine, the mayor's, anybody's, it has to, it has to be profitable, or you can't, you can't do stuff for free. So I would say, go back, let's take no action, talk to staff, see what you can work out, and then maybe come back in a couple weeks and see where we're at. Mr. Mayor?
Great, thank you. Well, that was a interesting presentation, but let me, let me touch on what I, what I, what I think I heard. And what I think I heard is that recycling is still a business model that you want to be in. You know, one through seven plastics can still be recycled, glass can still be recycled. The issue is that the return on that investment isn't there, so it's not offsetting the cost of the garbage pickup in the contract as we were anticipating it to be. Is that about it, right?
Correct, yep.
Right, so everything that, every resident can still put everything in the can.
Yes.
You're still going to recycle it, including the plastics three through seven, because there's a market for you, you're just not making any money on it, and the glass. But the issue becomes is that since you're not collecting the dollars that you used to collect, and this was all explained to us with All-in-One years back, I mean, we were doing All-in-One in order to reduce the rate, the garbage rate, and now that's gone.
Right.
Is that essentially where we're at, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, so we have recycling not generating the dollars as we used to. We have the same items still being able to be recycled because of the MRF facilities, which I know Oviedo participates in it. We have contamination as an issue.
That's the biggest issue of all of them.
Right, so, so I think what we need to do moving forward is have a best, a public education campaign, a consistent public education campaign, you know, that it's one through seven, it's clean everything out, it's clean out your glass, and it's, you know, not put Styrofoam in there, plastic bags, and everything else that I see sometimes folks put in there. So, you know, that, that sounds like that could help immensely to help fix this issue, be it temporary or not, we don't know. And it's not just Republic that's facing it. We know all the haulers are, are in the same boat that you're in. That's, goes without saying. I, I don't have an, an issue with having a discussion, as been mentioned up here, with you going back and sitting with staff. You know, I don't think we have to cut off our nose here to spite our face just yet. I, I think that we can find something that everybody can work with, because there has been tremendous investment in the community by Republic. The service level is excellent, the All-in-One, the one time a week with the arm, I mean, you know, folks have gotten used to that level of service. But I would think if we're going to have a conversation on some of the things that you may need, then we have to have a conversation on some of the things that we may need. And, you know, we may need bear-proof garbage cans. So, I mean, if we're going to sit down and have a conversation, possibly open this contract up, we're going to have a conversation both ways, because we have the eastern side of town currently with a lot of bears walking around, getting into the garbage, you know, and unfortunately, we've got two cans we have to deal with. You know, and then it becomes, when you sit down and you talk to staff about the bear cans, is it just the eastern side which then pushes the problem west? Is it something we phase in over the life of the contract? You know, start, start out east and then phase them in towards the west? You know, because if the whole entire city isn't covered, then, you know, what we're going to do is push the issue someplace else. But, you know, I, I would like to see if you go back and sit with staff and have a complete discussion, you know, and let, let's see if there is some common ground where we can keep the recycling program that we're, residents are used to. You know, we can recycle all the product. I know you mentioned the glass is used as aggregate. You're crushing the glass, as you told me earlier?
Yeah, the glass ends up going to Cedar Trail, our landfill in Parto, where we can use it as daily cover. So it's getting reused, it's not per se being landfilled. We use it as part of the process of running the landfill.
Well, that's good. So, I mean, it's getting recycled, it's getting reused, it's getting repurposed. And if somebody wants to buy it, he's a sell it to them.
Oh, yeah.
So I think that, you know, to, to start to say, to go backwards and say, you know, we're just going to stop recycling because it's not cost-effective and just throw things in a landfill, I, I don't see that as an answer. You know, but I do understand that if the cost of the hauling isn't being offset, then we have to have another discussion. But I think we need to find other uses as well, which I'm sure your company's working on. I mean, you know, you didn't build these hundred million dollar facilities all over the place not to sell your recyclables.
Correct. You know, we're very much still invested in this part of the, of the business. I mean, Jacksonville MRF, the one in that video is getting ready to invest $2 million back into that MRF. So we're not straying or shying away from this part of the industry and the business. We're fully committed to it. It just has to work on both sides of the, of the table, it has to work for everyone. And you're absolutely right, it is still, we can't go back culturally, we've come way too far. We, we can't go backwards from where we've been. That just wouldn't be the right thing to do.
No, it wouldn't. It, you know, there's been too much time, money, and education invested, but I think that we do need to educate the residents on what goes in the can, you know, and how the recycling is done. And that's, I mean, it can start locally here, but that's a, that's a national issue. You know, that, that's, you know, Ameri, other countries, you know, recycle things and recycle almost 100% of what they use. You know, here, we get a bit laissez-faire, let's call it, and we just throw it all in the blue bin. You know, I got my Starbucks cup, this must be recyclable, and throw it in there. I, I've seen it happen. So, you know, I, I would be willing to take it from that, that point of view, but if, you know, like I said, if you go and sit with staff and have a discussion with them, and, you know, we want to open up the contract on our end, well, you know, there may be things that we can ask for as well, and see if we can come to, come to something that everybody can, could live with, as opposed to, you know, going out to bid early on the contract. You know, may come to that, I don't know, but it all depends on-
We appreciate the opportunity to go, at least potentially explore that option, depending on-
Well, let me just go up and down the council and see if anybody has any other questions, and I'll see if there's consensus. Any other questions for them?
Well, just a comment, I'd like to see that education component happen sooner rather than later. Maybe it, you know, I look at my recycle bin, it's, it's, that chart's been worn off for like five years now, so I have no idea what, what, what it says, but maybe an updated version of the always, the never recycle chart that we can put out on a, on a laminate or stick to the, the cans, you know, one, one time through, so people can get reeducated on it.
Something we can look at.
Good. Now, I think you can sit down and work it through.
I'm good.
All righty, so everyone's good with, there's consensus for them to go sit with staff rather than approving or denying the resolution at this point in time? And to bring us something back in the, we won't put a deadline on it, but I'm sure you want to get this done.
Yes, sir.
And Brian, you can just take your time. Residents like $19 a month, so everything is, everything is all good. But no, I, I, I don't know if time is of the essence, but I think it should be something that should be able to be taken care of in a reasonable amount of time.
We need to.
All right. Well, it looks like we have consensus for that. Everyone's in agreement, right?
Good.
All righty. Mr. Groot, you need anything else from us on this? There's consensus, good.
All right, well, thank you very, very much.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you for the time and the support, and we certainly appreciate and value the partnership. Thank you very much.
Our pleasure, Chris. All righty, next item. It's just good to hear that everything's still being recycled. That's, that we like to hear. All righty, so, next item up is item number 14, and it is committee assignments for city council members. And we have the list on the dais of what we are all tasked with. Is there anything that anybody wants to give up, want to change on this list? I mean, I'll just run through it really quick. Calno, Councilman Britton, I know that's your favorite, right?
I'm the treasurer still, and it does provide value. I do have one comment, though, on the list. One thing we, I think we were going to start as a renewable resource committee with Mr. Pollak. And the other one that has been ongoing but kind of unofficially is the senior committee. And what I'd like to recommend is we sunset the Parks and Recs advisory committee and reconvene a formal senior committee that can, can maybe serve as a Parks and Recs advisory committee as well as focus on senior programs.
Okay. Let me, let me run through what we have here, and then we'll get back to, get back to those two. Renewable resource, got that. Tri-County lead, Deputy Mayor Pollak, you have that, but I know sometimes-
It can be, yeah, it can be difficult from where the meetings are, so if someone else wants one-
Councilman Chudnow, would you like that one?
I'd be more than happy to take that one.
All righty, so that one goes over to Chudnow. Community Service Block Grant Advisory Board. Keith, do you still want to keep that, or you want to see if anybody else wants it?
I'll toss it up. If someone wants it, it's a very low key. They meet probably quarterly for about an hour and a half. I'm getting kind of burnt out on it, but Mr. Jackson serves on the, on the board, and he's the representative for the Oviedo area. I'm just the city representative. If anyone wants it, they're welcome to it. If not, I'll, I'll keep it.
Any takers? Councilman Chudnow? See what happens when you're the new guy?
Yeah, let me, let me say this, and, and I'm going to, I'm going to recommend you take over ION, but it has a direct link with, with ION. They, they work together very closely with their programs and what ION tries to do.
I'll be happy to take that over for you, Councilman.
Don't worry, we'll explain all this to Cheryl. Metro Plan, the mayor serves on Metro Plan, but I, I do need a new alternate. Who would like to be the alternate?
When is it?
Thursday mornings.
How often?
Once a month, but, you know, generally, I make all the meetings. I only missed a couple last year.
Okay, I'll be your alternate.
Okay.
Don't miss any meetings.
All righty, so we have Hinkin for that one. Citizens Advisory Committee, it's been Mr. O'Hamlin. I, everybody still okay with that one? He does do a great job down there. I will say that, they would miss him. Seminole County Chamber of Commerce is myself, I have no problem with that. Vision Seminole, I have no problem with. Community Alliance is Officer Mike Hill. Is he going to stay, or?
Mayor, could we, instead of appointing an individual person of that, could we just say staff?
Okay.
And leave it at that? That way, in case we have any movement within the department-
So the staff will, the police, is that something at the police department, basically?
Yes, sir. Yes, some of the community involvement would generally take-
Okay, so we'll let the OPD decide?
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
Good.
Yep, okay. Chamber of Commerce, Bob, I'll ensure it. Do you want to keep it?
I can keep it.
You can keep it?
I can keep it. A lot of the luncheons I can't attend, but I know you attend those, and some other people can.
Luncheons are no problem, we take care of those. All right, so now we're on to the recommendation of Councilman Britton to sunset Parks and Recreation and turn that into a senior advisory committee. Is there any objection to that?
I guess I have one question for Drew. Is that, I know you use the Parks and Recs occasionally for, for grant reviews, but could the senior committee do that function? Okay. I'd really like to have a seniors committee, but if we need to, maybe we can go back and, the Parks and Recs committee's been kind of dormant for a while, but maybe we need to go back and re, reformat it and redo the membership of it.
Well, let me ask you a quick question, if I can, I'm sorry. Do you intend on taking lead on that, on the senior committee?
Yeah.
All righty, so if it's okay with the council, why don't we leave senior committee, Parks and Recs, in Councilman Britton's hands? Let him work with staff and, and figure out how it's going to be, and if one's going to sunset, just report back to us and let us know.
May I have a quick question? That senior committee, can, can that be an appointed committee now? I know you had just pretty much-
That's totally up to us. I think we need to do a charter. I can work with Brian on a charter.
Yeah, because we have one, because we have one, we have one board. It'd be nice to have another board to appoint people to, you know? So I think that would be good, if you want to do that. I think they could run both, but I think they, we should appoint them, because we only have, well, we have two. It'd be a third board, it gives some people some opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Britton and I have already started discussions about how we could set up this board to make it more of a formalized-
Okay, make it a little bit, make it more formal.
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Everyone's good with that? All righty. ION Committee, it sounded like Councilman Chudnow was getting that one.
Yep, and he's, just for everyone's information, he's been very involved with it from the very beginning, so chief, I think-
Slide right in.
You can go in there with a very little learning curve.
UCF Foundation Board is the mayor's seat, but over the years, Councilman Britton has been my appointee to that. If you'd like to continue it, I'll make sure that occurs.
I absolutely would.
Okay, no problem. As a, yeah, as a UCF alum, he works out great for them. Friends elect Jessup is sort of kind of inactive, but-
No, that's the old sheet. That was from January of 18. I already talked to Barbara, that's active, and we're going to get that cleaned up. I'm working on stuff for that, so I'll-
All right, so you'll keep that?
Yes.
Facilities Planning Committee, I think all the mayors sit on that, if I'm not mistaken, but they don't meet too often, and I think city staff works on that one, right, Mr. Cobb?
We have a staff committee, yes.
Okay, so I'll keep that one. Councilman Britton, you mentioned, or, or Deputy Mayor Pollak, renewable resource. Can we expand on that one?
We had that discussion when we voted on the, on the, to be a renewable city or set a goal to-
Oh, that's right, the green city.
And then I, we talked about technology, and I think Deputy Mayor Pollak mentioned setting up a committee to look at that stuff, and that's, you know, this 3D printer stuff and using the plastic, I think that's right up our alley for that type of committee.
Would you like to be?
Yeah, let me, yeah, I'll be the representative, and I'll sit down with staff on, on kind[1790.45] Yeah, let me, yeah, I'll be the representative, and I'll sit down with staff on, on kind of developing that to, to make it more formal.
Okay, is everybody okay? Mr. Pollak, Councilman, Deputy Mayor, yep?
Oh, I had one, one comment on ION.
Mm-hmm.
That I did make Mr. Jackson a promise that we would work on a trash can program for his neighborhood. If we can get volunteers or someone to pick up the cans, you know, we're, I think the concept, Mr. Jackson, you can help me out here, is put a trash can on a, on a light pole or something, so that people walking down the street will throw it in the trash can rather than down the street. The issue is who's going to, who's going to collect it?
I, I, I think, don't we collect over at the, the bus stops, Mr. Cobb? Is that city staff, or ultimately, who picks up the bus stops?
We do. We do service the bus stops, yes.
So, you know, there's ways.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, get with the chief, or Councilman Chudnow, sorry.
Telling you it's going to take us, it's never going to go away. And we got guys sitting right here who can pick up the garbage.
I asked them to stay until we had this discussion.
All right, so we have renewable resource. So, that takes care of all the discussion items. Did I miss anything? Anybody have anything else to bring up? All righty, looks like we're all set. Barbara, I'm assuming you, or Brian, you probably took notes, right?
Yes.
That's a silly question, I'm sorry. Of course you took notes. All right, so now we're up to the report section of the meeting. That's the end of our items on the agenda tonight, and the first report is Mr. Cobb.
I thank you, Mayor. I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Hope you had a wonderful holiday season. And I have one item for you tonight, one request. I need to have a work session on January the 28th. Our consultants have completed the impact fee technical study, and we need to have them come in and present their findings. And we usually, because this study is such a large thing with a lot of moving parts, we'd like to have a work session with you before we actually bring the ordinance to revise the impact fees. I don't know what the findings are this year, I wish I could tell you, but I really don't. I don't know what they are yet, but Tindal Oliver needs time with you, and January 28th would be our normal time that we would have a work session.
Six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Six o'clock, work for everyone on the 28th?
Sure.
Yep. Councilman Chudnow?
It should be.
Deputy Mayor?
Sounds good.
Okay. You got it, Brian?
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
That's all I have, Mayor.
All righty. Mr. Groot, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Do you have anything for us tonight?
Not unless you want me to sing.
All is quiet at the Sanford Attorney's Office, that's what we like to hear. Starting off with myself, be really brief this evening. It's just Happy New Year to everybody. We've got a great 2019 ahead of us in the city. On Thursday, the Oviedo/Winter Springs Chamber of Commerce luncheon is the local update, and they've switched it up a little bit this year. It's not only going to be the mayors of Oviedo and Winter Springs, but also the county. Going to do it all in one luncheon this year, so it'll be, be exciting to see how that all works out, hopefully really well. And I think the luncheon is at, back at the Cultural Arts Center, right? So, it's over here at our amphitheater. We have the Martin Luther King Day celebration coming up on the 21st. We had the prayer breakfast the, on Saturday morning, it was very well-attended and excellent event as it always is. And as Mr. Cobb said, we'll be having a work session on 28th. So, that will be the end of my report for now, and unfortunately, as we all know, UCF did finally lose. What a shame that was, but.
Still proud of them.
You got to be very proud of them. I had the pleasure of actually going out to the game, and it was exciting to watch, so, that's all right. Now, we'll just start 1-0 next year.
There you go.
Keep it going forward. Deputy Mayor Pollak, you're up.
Yeah, I think UCF, it'll just give them something to achieve for, for the future and move forward with that.
We're going to fly the flag.
Yep. Do we need to get a new flag?
Hmm?
Do we need a new flag now?
I'm going to see Danny White on Sunday, I'll ask him.
There you go. A bigger one.
A bigger, I, I will ask Danny on Sunday.
All right.
We have a new flag for the new season.
I don't have a whole lot. We received an email this afternoon, I'll forward it on to you, Brian. It was from Ms. McCollum, that's in the, the back of the room, on a solar co-op, kind of in line with, with some of the renewable stuff, just to, to see if you could sit down and kind of look at that and kind of bring back a report on that, on, on kind of what that, what that is, and how that would work for the city. Also, I had a question, now that we've got the, the streetlight fees change, what's the status of what FPNL and Duke are doing now in the city?
I've got two separate initiatives going right now. We're looking, FPL is currently working on upgrading LED lighting in both Live Oak and Sanctuary along corridors where there's no housing. I didn't want to throw it in people's backyards right away and have them, you know, not receive it well. So, we're going to put it on Live Oak Reserve Boulevard and Sanctuary Drive initially, on the east side of town, and retrofit there, and they're working on the design as we speak, so that we put it in play and see how, what we react, reaction is to it, and from there, we'll spread out into the residential areas.
Now, is there, are there options to the, the lighting? I mean, I know that I've heard some of the cities, they, they were complaining about some of the LED lighting because it was too bright.
There's temperature, and I will tell you, in speaking with the FPL representative, we're actually going with a lower intensity lighting. It's still bright enough to cover the area, but it's not the overall super bright light.
Now, what about the dark areas in the city?
As I get more funding, right now, what I'm doing is cost-neutral. As we get revenue, we will expand into the other areas where we don't have lighting. And now, actually in the, in the Duke service area, we're actually, I've got Mr. Hammack going right now under design.
Okay.
For retrofit.
All right. Are you, are you working with any of the, some of the new technology to, the, some of the more energy-efficient, besides just LEDs, some with, with solar or anything on that?
Not at current.
No.
We have talked about in-house, if we want to put some separate lighting in isolated locations, we might look at solar.
Okay, all right.
One of the challenges we face with the solar is the life of the battery, and whether or not it can sustain the amount of energy, whether or not we can generate enough sunlight during the day to sustain enough energy to light the lights over through the night. And that's one, I know the FPL folks, that's something that's a big concern with them right now, is being able to find a, a type of battery that will, that will sustain itself. So, we're trying to work through that.
Okay.
I do want to try a couple of isolated locations, though, where we actually purchase it ourselves and put them out, and see how they, how they go for possibly future implementation.
Okay, sounds good.
Bobby?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, where are we on the replacement of street signs? I know you've done a lot already. You know, some neighborhoods that really, you know, some of the signs really can't read them. Have you still got that going on?
We typically, the, the goal that I had set for staff was whenever we do resurfacing each year.
Oh.
We would, whatever area where we're surfacing, we'll change out the signs.
Okay.
Plus, we would pick a neighborhood or two, because really, street signs, believe it or not, aren't that expensive.
Right.
So, we're trying to hit the areas where we're surfacing, and then pick another extra, a couple of extra neighborhoods. But now, I've been told by staff that the entire neighborhood of, of Alafera Woods needs to be redone, and that's, you know.
Alafera, Kingsbridge East, yeah, you got a lot of signs. I know you're on it. You did a great job. What's out there, I think citizens like it, they look great, so just, you know, when you see ones out of bed, you know, just stay on that one.
Yes, sir, but that's the overall plan, is whatever we're surfacing plus a couple of extra.
Yeah.
The older ones being first.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, Deputy Mayor?
That's all I have.
Well, Councilman Hankin, you're up.
Just got a couple of quick things. I want to send off congratulations to Oviedo's own, our former supervisor of elections, who as you might have read is now the Secretary of State for the state of Florida, Mike Ortell. So, that's a well-deserved promotion appointment, whatever you want to call it. Mike is a, is a great guy, did a great job for many years with the, with the voting, and he'll do a good job for, for Florida, so I just want to pass that out. Lars, it's hard to believe, like, you have one more meeting after all those years, 480 council meetings or whatever. I know your next meeting will be, be the last one, but just ahead of time. Thank you, brother. We appreciate everything you did, and we know you'll still be involved, but just really hard to believe, I was just watching you sitting there, saying, man, one more meeting, man, I'm going to have to deal with Buchanan.
Why don't you get on the Parks and Rec committee?
There you go.
And just think, you can be able to look out the back of your townhome at the new firehouse, the Lars White Firehouse.
Oh, yeah, you're getting it. That's it. Absolutely, well, thank you.
Well, we'll, we'll leave the space. Don't worry.
Well, thank you, chief, appreciate it. And one other thing that we tried to accomplish last year, but it, it needs to be done, Patrick and Mr. Mayor need to go to Washington and find out where our million dollars is. I've called, I've spoke to them, but nothing will work better when you two go there and ask them point blank. We need to find out if that's still working, if it needs to be changed, deleted, whatever. But that's a lot of money out there. I know there's a lot of moving parts to it, but could we please schedule a trip for just the mayor and Patrick? And Patrick, for people don't know Patrick, Patrick is very familiar with how Washington works, having worked for Congressman Mike all those years. So, I, I think, could we, could we get that on the schedule? And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, go, and I'm kind of volunteering you, but I think that's important. The mayor and our congressional leader to find out where that money is. Is that, can we get some consensus on that?
Should have went last year.
Needs to be done. I want to know what's happening. I call and I get things, and it seems like it's moving along, but there's, you need to meet with some other people and stuff. So, can we get that consensus for that?
You can go on, on a train if you want.
No, 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 you just need you two to go. I'd fly, but you two can handle it, you know?
It's up to the council.
Well, yes?
Is there consensus?
Yes.
Mr. Cobb, can you get them rolling? We need that million bucks.
That's all, that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Happy New Year, everybody.
All righty. Chudnow, chief, you're up. Councilmember Jeff Chudnow.
I just got a couple of things. First, for those who don't know, we've been working very hard to bring a Boys and Girls Club up to the city. Been working hard with some partners, meet Antioch Baptist Church, the police department, sheriff's office, and some other, people in the city's citizens make is very, is very involved. And with any luck, we're, we're going to be renovating the building at 419 and Avenue B. With any luck, we're going to start the renovation sometime this month.
Wow, nice.
Oh.
Awesome.
Once completed, hopefully to, to open in conjunction with school next year, and we'll be able to, Boys and Girls Club will be able to service between 60 and 70 kids. The only other thing that I have is, it's a little way off, but on January 26th is the annual law enforcement car show at the mall. Always a great event.
Forgot about that one.
So, that's it.
Great. And Councilman Britton, you're up.
I think you covered everything I was going to talk about. Happy New Year to everyone. I hope everyone had a good holiday. I'm still on holiday, sort of, kind of, unpaid. I don't have anything else to report, except that I will not be here at the next meeting. I think I reported that back in, in December, so I'll be out of town that week.
All righty. Anything else?
No, oh, one other thing, there is a CSBG meeting next week. Mr. Chudnow, I'll go to that, and I'll just announce that you'll be taking over after that.
Okay, when is that meeting?
It's next Thursday. And if you want to go, you're more than welcome.
Okay.
I'll, I'll go with you.
All right. Anything else, Keith?
Nope, that's it.
All righty. Mr. Cobb, anybody else good at the order?
No, sir.
All righty, future meeting dates. This is not a mistake. It is Tuesday, January 22nd, 6:30 PM here at Council Chambers. We have a regular session, excuse me, January 28th, 6:00 PM, we have a work session. Monday, February 4th, we have a CRA meeting at 5:30 and a regular session at 6:30. And then Monday, February 19th, we have a regular session at 6:30 PM. With all that being said, we are adjourned.